Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. So if everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to see, okay. Sometimes our students join us and then ask to come in, but does that seem to be that they're here? Now they're usually not here, the first meeting.
Global Work Session.
Global Work Session, but I said they're welcome anytime. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing them. So we are looking forward to hearing from them next meeting. So does anyone have any board committee reports? Vito?
I'll give one. The Finance Committee just had its first meeting. Yes, was that a committee meeting or was that a subcommittee meeting?
No, that was a committee meeting.
Yeah, well, sorry about that. Thank you for reminding me of that. Finance Committee just had their first meeting this evening. We were looking at some preliminary numbers, very preliminary numbers, where we stand year-to-date and some projections of where we may end up in the springtime when we're getting ready to do the budget. I mean, budgets ongoing, but when we get ready to have our budget meetings. And that's really all I have to report. There's nothing, nothing to share, really. But we're going to stay on top of, we should be getting more information on state aid. And obviously, Lisa, correct me if I say anything wrong here. You know, sales tax revenues, state aid, all that stuff is up in the air. And, you know, we'll, we'll adjust those numbers going forward and we'll have more to talk about probably in another four to five weeks or so.
Aaron?
I'm here. To follow up on Vito, I attended an advocacy meeting last night and they're waiting on Cuomo's budget comes out on the 19th. And it was a big difference to last year. There isn't a word about foundation aid. It's all about recouping COVID costs. Everybody's waiting to see what Cuomo has to say. And Westchester-Putnam Board is going to be having a panel on February 4th and February 11th to meet with elected representatives to get an idea of what we can push for for them to advocate for us in Albany. So hopefully we'll have some optimistic news for them.
Thank you. I want to make sure you're getting my blind spots. Okay. And then I'll hand it over to our superintendent.
Evening, everyone. Just a couple items. We're thrilled to hit the milestone of being able to finally have a vaccine available for our educators and everyone who works in our school system. It's so very important and something we've been looking forward to for a long time. So our educators are now in the process of scheduling their vaccines. And we don't know exactly how long that will take, but we're on the way within the coming weeks and months that those are all completed. The Department of Health has revised guidance to change the definition of who is a close contact in school. That also affects our ability to stay open, particularly at the secondary level. Under the previous guidance, if you were, if you were defined as a close contact, if you were in a classroom for 40 minutes and you were in one of that classroom. So every teacher and every student in a given classroom would have been quarantined in the previous guidance, but under the new guidance, you have to be within six feet for 10 minutes cumulatively within a day or more. And if that is the case, then you're quarantined. So it significantly reduces the number of people who are considered quarantined and that helps us be more consistently operating in a hybrid mode and not in a remote mode. We're thankful for that. We've been parsing through that guidance and we now know how to operationalize that guidance and so we'll be moving forward with that. I want to thank everyone who responded to the call put out by Assistant Superintendent Scott Winn for making a choice for hybrid or remote for the second semester. And we are thankful that we don't see a lot of movement in the elementary levels. We see a lot of stability and that means it's probably served people pretty well and they're interested in remaining in the arrangement that they have. That's a good thing. Want to let everybody know that should testing need to be done, should we be in a microcluster zone, we're prepared to move forward with that. And we thank all the parents who have responded with authorizations for their students to allow us to do testing if we would need to do that to fulfill the state mandate. You heard a little bit about the budget, so we continue to keep our eyes on that. We thank our board and Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sanfilippo for providing us with excellent data and forecasting in that regard. Just want to remind everybody there's a coffee and conversation on January 19th at 7:00, 8:00 PM. That is a virtual Zoom meeting. That link will be sent out a couple days ahead. And we'll have a special guest, Maggie Hagerty, who is a behavioral analyst, who will be talking about the new normal, creating independence and following schedules in the home. We know that it's very challenging in the new normal with children in the home for so much, for such a long period of time engaged in learning. So we want to be able to provide a little bit of support there. I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Oriana So for helping set that up. And that's my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Glass. It's greatly appreciated. Next, I'm actually going to turn it over for District Instructional Vision Presentation by Assistant Superintendent Scott Winn and our Director of Technology, Mr. Bill Twel.
Thank you all. It's great to see everyone in person. It's nice rather than through a screening, although kind of doing the same thing anyway. But wanted to take some time tonight to update all of you on the progress that's been made over the past several months related to technology and the vision related to technology. So I'm going to have Dr. Glass pull up the presentation.
Yes, and of course, what, would it be a Zoom meeting if I weren't struggling? There's, of course, here we go. I'm having a hard time looking at it now. We'll try to over time. Thanks for patience.
I think we're there. Excellent. Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Glass. So like I said, we wanted to take a little bit of time. Bill and I tonight will kind of lead you through some of the work that has been done beginning last winter at this point around moving our technology program forward. Technology in this district has had some ups and downs, to put it in a way. And I think we are at a point where we are really beginning to develop a plan to re-engage technology. I think one of the positives, if we can say any positive, that came out of COVID was kind of a jump-starting of us, of our technology program and moving our technology program forward. So Doc, if you could advance, that would be great. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill. Bill's going to lead us through a little bit of some of the background in some of the work that we've been doing and then we'll, we'll talk about our technology vision.
Good evening. Thank you. As Scott said, last November, we brought together Mayor and Sun Associates to come in and assist us with the technology region. And we brought together a small group of technology committee. And from there, we created some benchmarks that we wanted to see technology going forward for the district. And then Sun Associates took those and used them, their guiding principles to go ahead and do surveys, using some of the Clarity data that we have from the surveys that we do with Clarity, along with a Google survey that they put out to the teachers and staff. They then started to go through, visiting with teachers in classrooms, doing observations, holding focus groups for parents, students, teachers, support staff. And they brought together all the information aligned with the benchmarks that we wanted to see and then brought back some of their recommendations. Their recommendations guided us with mapping it going forward to allow us to start to create a vision. And with their recommendations, one of the key recommendations was to create a vision and then use that as our guiding principle for technology as we move forward. So if we move on to the next screen, our next step was, we were here, we came back in the fall of 2020 and we developed a technology committee, parents, students, administrators, board member, and 23 total members joined and assisted with us on this. So it was a good group. It was a very great cross-reference between K through 12 teachers. So we had a good exposure there for everybody participating. Throughout the fall of 2020, we met with Sun Associates. We had, we were holding Zoom meetings and we met and we worked on samples of vision statements, looking at samples and creating indicators that we wanted to have for the vision statement. And what came of that was three specific areas that we wanted to concentrate on, students, staff, and district. From there, we then concentrated on those indicators and creating goals and outcomes for those indicators. And then from there, we put together what was going to be the framework for the vision based on the students, staff, and the district. And then out from that, those goals were more refined and they were, they were then defined and came to what we now have is our vision and the framework for the technology vision. So the third slide, Scott's going to bring us through these steps.
So the next four slides are really truly the overall vision statement that was created by the committee. And we wanted to break it down for you. This first slide shows kind of the overarching statement of the vision. And we have the Eastchester Union Free School District envisions technology as an integral component of student outcomes. Eastchester students leverage technology tools and resources to do these different things. And we wanted to make sure that it was emphasized that the committee and the district is going to be seeing technology as a tool and a resource to support education. It's not simply a thing we do. It's not something we just buy. It is a tool that has a purpose. And as you can see, there's things here that are truly supportive of the learning environment. We're talking about students engaging in the analysis and authentication of information and data. So they're using technology as a tool to accomplish this engagement. They're looking for technology to explore new and non-traditional ideas, to explain, strategize, and plan long-term outcomes, to elaborate and collaborate, to achieve goals, and to evaluate their environment to adapt and recover when things did not go according to plan. So now what we're going to do is we're going to break down, as Bill had mentioned, there was three main categories that we focused on. We talked about having a vision for students, for staff, and for the district. So to begin for students, we have through early explicit instruction, students build technological fluency, giving them the knowledge, skills, and confidence to embrace innovation, creativity, and problem-solving in a resilient mindset. As students grow into productive learners through inquiry and experimentation, technology tools encourage academic risk-taking. They provide real-time feedback. They create a non-threatening environment for practice and assist students in the articulation of their own thoughts. So we see here that technology for students is going to be, it's coming back to that idea of it being a tool to accomplish all of these things that we want to see happen within the classroom and within students' daily lives. It's being able to empower them and give them the tools necessary in order to move them forward. In terms of staff, we have the Eastchester staff utilize and implement technology facilitated or enriched learning activities that are purposely designed to balance the existing curriculum with individual student choice, agency, and creativity. In addition, technology is employed as a data collection resource that allows staff as practitioners to inform their instructional decision-making and the differentiation of instruction. Through this differentiation, educational opportunities are provided for each student to flourish and to follow their passions, academics, and otherwise. So really, our goal here and our vision for staff and using technology is twofold. One is to be able to truly begin the process of individualizing instruction. It's pushing that idea of differentiation. It's pushing the idea of finding the connection for each and every student in order to make education real. The second part is to be able to use this, use technology, in order to collect data, do an analyze data, to really begin to dive into what is it that students are doing well? What are they struggling with? How is their teaching helping students? And how can they use these tools in order to make instruction better for the students within our district? And for the district, the district promotes and supports a shared decision-making model around technology that embraces stakeholder input and feedback, optimizes community knowledge of partnerships, and invests in the most impactful resources to ensure reliable and universal access to technology and support. In support of its staff members, Eastchester offers substantive, consistent, time-sensitive professional development that meets the ongoing needs of its stakeholders and honors best practices. So we've got some commitments here in terms of a vision of what we expect of us as a district. We expect that we're going to have a team that looks at this in a shared decision-making model that brings in stakeholder feedback, very similar to the process we used in order to create this vision, where we have parents, we have members of the teaching staff, we have members of the Board of Education, all coming together to look at what's best. We have to acknowledge that our community has some really great resources out there that can help us in this process. And how do we optimize that? And we as a group, and you as a group specifically, need to look at this and say, we're talking about a vision in which we're investing in the most impactful resources. And that's going to be a big discussion for us as we move forward in terms of what does that mean and how are we going to invest in technology that is most impactful moving forward? I think one of the most important things here in this part of this statement is this idea of universal access. How do we make sure that all of our students have the access that they need in order to be successful through the use of technology? So with that being said, we want to talk a little bit about the next steps. So if we can have a vision statement, and it's great to say, this is our vision, but without the next steps, without the goals, and without the action planning that comes with each of those goals, really that statement means nothing. We can put that on paper, we can put it up on a wall, but it doesn't mean anything until we actually do something with it. So based upon that, here are some of the goals that are coming out of the work that we're doing. This vision statement has been created. We've started looking at goals. The next steps in this will be to take each of these goals and action-plan them out to make sure that we know exactly how we're going to accomplish this. So in terms of the district, the first one is to create that decision-making model. How are we going to make those decisions? What does that look like? What kind of committee does that look like? Who's on it? What, what is the makeup? What is the timeframe that they will use in order to make these decisions around what technology is needed within the district? We need to start making decisions about what does it mean to invest in reliable, equitable, and universal access? Does that mean a one-to-one program? Does that mean a BYOD program? What does that rollout look like? What kind of expenses does that actually result in relative to the kinds of things that we are deciding that we need to invest in? And we also have down here that we want, need to create and sustain a multifaceted system of technical instructional support for all stakeholders. Technology doesn't function without support, and it needs to be supported on both ends of the spectrum. Bill and his team do a great job in terms of the technical support, and we've seen that grow and we've seen that really pushed to the limits during COVID, but really being able to support the infrastructure and the technological aspect. The piece of this that, in my opinion, that we're truly not upsnuff with is the instructional support. How are we supporting technology from the instructional aspect in order to implement and get to the goals that we have for our students and staff in terms of technology? And that is a huge goal that we need to really begin to break down. What does that look like? What are the, what is the professional development needing? What is the staffing that possibly could be needed in order to support that? Who has the oversight of that? All big questions that we need to brack over. In terms of our students, we need a well-defined K-12 scope and sequence that is aligned to the standards, but not just the standards of a standalone technology program. Not in elementary, the pull-out tech program, not in the middle school, the, the classes that the students attend. Those are important. But also, how does this scope and sequence reflect the integrated approach of our everyday classroom teachers? How are they using technology? And what is their role in being able to build the technological skills of our students on a daily basis? We need to look at and identify, adopt and implement benchmarks. We need to measure this. How do we know that our students are actually proficient using technology? How do we know that when a student leaves us in 12th grade, that they have accomplished all the skills and have the skills necessary that we have defined as being important relative to technology? And we truly need to begin to decide, what is this inquiry process that we're talking about? Inquiry has become a really big question for us here in Eastchester. How do we begin to get students to be askers of good questions? How do we develop that within our students? And that is part of this process. And what role does technology play in building this, this inquiry process that we, that we so desire to have? In terms of staff, professional development is the absolute key here. We have learned that as part of COVID. If we do not professionally develop our staff, technology is an absolute failure. We need to make sure that before we're implementing anything, that our teachers have the skills necessary in order to make this work, that they feel comfortable enough using the technology in the ways that we wish them to use it. One of the things that we really are looking at and that was recommended by the committee was being able to relate this and build from a technology framework or a model. And there's a couple of models that were discussed within the discussions that we had. They're, they're named up here. SAMR is one, TPACK is another. Not necessarily that you necessarily know what those are, but these are kind of frameworks around the use and implementation of technology as an instructional tool that we can kind of hook onto and use as an anchor to truly make our, and help our teachers understand what good technology usage looks like within the classroom. So the adoption of a model like this, and whether it be an actual model, or if we end up kind of blending some of these models together and developing our own for Eastchester, whatever that may look like, we need a process by which we're going to review that and we're going to adopt it and we're going to then professionally develop our staff around those, around that model. And finally, we really need our staff to provide students with digital learning experiences that accommodate differences. So this comes back to the differentiation piece. We're always looking for ways to build our students' creativity, their thinking, their problem-solving. Well, if that's the case, how do we create a, an experience for them that our teachers are comfortable implementing through the use of technology? So each of these, like I said, each of these goals will need to be taken and action-planned out. They need to be clearly defined, then they need to be step-by-step over the next several years of what this is going to look like. Obviously, this is a huge change. This is a tremendous development of our district. If we were able to take this and over the next, in my opinion, five years, be able to action-plan this out and be able to implement this, we would truly be in a spectacular place. So that's kind of the direction that we're headed. This is the, the work that's in front of us. And, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to, to thank Bill for his leadership in, in, in putting this, putting this work together. I definitely need to thank Jeff Sun from Sun Associates. He has been a, an invaluable partner to us, the, the team at the RIC, and all of the members of the Technology, you know, Review Committee and the Vision Committee. I want to thank our Board of Ed members that, that joined us for that and all of our, our staff members that took the time to really be thinking partners in this work. I can tell you that right down to the wordsmithing of every single word within there, that every single word was truly scrutinized and looked at and said, is that really what we mean? Is that really what we want to say? And there was a lot of debate back and forth, but I think we've got a, a, a great product here that has been collaboratively developed. Our parents that were on the committee were very excited about this work, and I think that moving this forward will definitely take our district to, to very, very good places and to higher heights and will support our, our instructional program greatly. So probably you can go one more? We'll open it up to if, if any board member has questions or things they'd like to talk about. Yes, Vito?
You've got to unmute me here, somebody. Let me see. Okay. You mentioned one of the important things is being the, the analysis of data.
Yes.
The use of data by the teachers and stuff. And I'm probably very comfortable with the fact that many chef members are very comfortable with using data and analyzing, capable of doing it. But I'm equally of the opinion that probably just as many can't and don't. Okay? And, you know, I know staff development's always important, but more important than that is, how do you anticipate being able to identify which people you need, that particular piece of staff development? People who aren't using the data, can't use the data, so that, you know, to bring them along as well? What's like the overall plan for that?
That's a great question. And I think that, that, that is a universal question with any professional development we do. And I think that, that begins with a needs assessment. It begins with an analysis of who really truly understands the topic and who needs the development and what level. And I think, you know, being able to work with the principals, being able to work with our supervisors to have those individual discussions with teachers about what is the kind of data that they're using? How are they using it? And our teachers are very, very good about saying, you know, I don't, I don't really do that. And, you know, how would I go about doing that? I think even as an administrative team, we've had a lot of these questions about, well, what data are we using? You know, what, what kind of, what kind of elements are we looking at? So I think that goes right back to, to our teaching staff and part of the professional development, is beginning with a needs assessment, seeing what that looks like, and then building a true professional development around that.
And if I could, you know, one of the other pieces that would be part of that is a repository that all that assessment work can be put into, so it provides an easier access and makes it more available and teachers are more encouraged and staff are more encouraged to go do it and use it.
Okay. I presume then that you, what you would do is you would probably set up groups of individuals that have similar needs and maybe give them a mentor that can help them through the things. Because I consider myself, for my age, very good in technology. There's stuff that I have no idea how it works. And I always recruit my son to help me, you know, because kids always know, you know, the, and when you say like bringing... And when you say, like, bringing kids along at an early level, I think kids are coming into our district with pretty good handle on some of the technology that's available and how to use it, you know? And as they develop, now, obviously, some aren't. I agree there, but I think you could probably learn from some of those real little kids. I know I can, because there's things that they do that I don't, you know? And I don't do it because I choose not to do it, but I should know how to do it. You know what I'm saying? So I'm just, I don't know.
No, and you're absolutely right. I mean, children nowadays are coming to us with different skills, that's for sure.
Ah.
You know, it's interesting, you know, we come back, and the committee kind of grappled with this briefly, it wasn't the time or place, about where do we teach typing?
You don't.
Okay? And is that an important skill for us to be teaching at this point? You know, we've got a whole generation of kids who, they are slightly fast with those thumbs, but you put them in front of a keyboard, and it's the hunt and peck method back to it. You know, it's very interesting. We have middle school teachers who are telling us that students, they understand things like Google much better than most adults do, but most students don't understand the structure of how do files get saved and how do you retrieve them in a non-Google environment? They are very kind of, that's foreign to them.
That's actually the danger of using Google.
Well, it's...
And using Google Docs and using all those...
It's the danger of using any of those things.
All those kinds of Google applications, because they need to know how to do it locally as well as opposed to out in the cloud.
So that's, those are the kinds of things that we're beginning to look at in terms of that K-12 scope and sequence, of being able to say, okay, what is the ending? What are the essential skills that we want every student to be insured to have when they leave us in 12th grade? And then back mapping all the way down to kindergarten of how do we as a district make sure that those skills are being taught at what levels and are reinforced all the way through? So that's the kind of work that we've begun, and, you know, it's great to hear feedback from all of our constituency groups, you know, our technology teachers, our general ed teachers, our, you know, our parents, and our students, to be able to say, you know, well, I feel like I learned that. Or some people say, yeah, I never, I never saw that at all in my experience here in Eastchester. So that's the kind of work that we're engaging in.
Cheryl. I have two questions, and the first one is a local one, so I'll start with that. Your mention about how hard your wordsmith, wordsmith the document kind of opened the door for me, because a word jumped out at me on the very first slide of the four slides of the vision statement. It was, I think, you were, you had bullet points laying out that the tool, the technology would, students would, you know, learn how to use these tools. And one of the bullets was to explore and analyze maybe new and non-traditional ideas. And I was wondering if you could speak to what you mean by non-traditional ideas?
You know, we, as a district, I think there's a desire moving forward, and I think there's some other words within here that began to bubble up, things like student choice and student exploration. And, you know, how do we create opportunities for students to explore things that really are important to them that may not be part of the traditional curriculum that we have? You know, we see every once in a while some of our students coming up exploring ideas outside of school that we say, wow, and we celebrate them for that. Well, where is the opportunity here in Eastchester within our structure for students to begin to explore things that are interesting to them? And how can technology support that process along the way? So I think that's where that wording was headed in terms of non-traditional, of opening doors for students to explore things that may not be so much part of the traditional Eastchester program or even New York State program.
Thanks. That's helpful. The other question is, you know, another strikes me that perhaps another benefit of the way that we have been educating over the last almost full year now in remote or hybrid learning is that it shows us what technology cannot replace. So, you know, there are ways that obviously, you know, focus on technology can get in the way, or there are things that you simply can't do in the same way, you know, when you are, when you're forced to rely so heavily on technology for teaching and learning. So I was wondering if the committee spoke about that at all, and the concern about making sure to balance good old fashioned, you know, face-to-face classroom learning and discussion and shutting the tablets with the benefits that you can reap with certain platforms and technologies and learning.
Absolutely. And I think each of the subcommittees kind of tackled that discussion in its own way, but as a whole, and I think we were very, very sensitive in our, the elementary teachers on the committee, you know, were very aware of that and brought that up frequently about the need for, and I think that's where the stressing of technology as a tool, that it is not the instructional method, it is not the end-all, be-all, it's not the way, but it is a resource and a tool in order to enhance instruction. You know, I am, as a teacher, you know, to me, there is nothing better than the relationship between teacher and student in person. But I think there are ways, and I think there are, you know, ways that the committee is going to have to kind of address, whether it's screen time, whether it's time on task, whether it is that in-person connection of how we can use technology in its most appropriate way while still providing the best instruction that we can to our students.
Well, I just, I want to add like one more little quick thing to that, because I was thinking when you were talking about staff development, you were talking about, you know, making sure that the faculty, teachers have the skills with technology. And I was thinking about, you know, in education, we talk about developing mindsets in students, and I think with technology, you know, as teachers, we have to come to a certain kind of mindset as well, you know, of this is how it enhances what I can do. I have to have a mindset of it's okay to make mistakes because you're trying new platforms and it's not going to work out the way you wanted to, and what are the, what are the benefits of that journey and taking that journey with students? Those, you know, so it's more, it goes beyond skill learning. It's like integrating it into your mindset as an educator and thinking about how you individually, you know, it has to be an individualizing too, I think, for teachers. So the onboarding or the training is so much more, you know, complex and potentially meaningful, because I think it's an individual, the teacher personality is part of how that technology can be applied, you know what I mean? You can learn the skill, but then, and not all technologies will work for every discipline, grade level, individual, do you know what I mean?
Oh, no, I 100% agree. You know, teaching is, teaching is a very personal field, and, you know, we never want to stifle the creativity of our teachers. At the same time, I also want to make sure that we are engaging in that academic risk-taking and are supporting it to the point where our teachers feel comfortable saying, you know what? Here's a new tool. Let's see if it works. If it doesn't, that's okay, but we'll try it and see if it's something that I can use. Sure.
Judith? I actually have a couple of comments that are very relevant to Cheryl's comments and her questions. As you know, and some of you may know, I had the privilege, really, of serving on the Technology Vision Committee. And one of the things that was really illuminating was the perspective of having in the same, Zoom provided with that word, right? You know, a perspective from Mrs. Batson Waverly, and at the same time, you know, Tom Boisno in the middle school was teaching technology, and Anthony Rich, some of the folks, you know, and high school teachers, John Blazer was there. And, you know, you start off talking about things like, and Erin, I forgot.
Lynn Meyer.
Lynn Meyer, thank you. I know her name. My daughter had it when she was still, unfortunately, but anyway. You know, you're like, you know, I'm in there thinking about, oh, programming and computer science classes, and, you know, Ms. Batson says, well, I have to teach these kids how to even type in the computer, how to, you know, how to log in, you know? And then you have Ms. Schuster talking about the library thing. It was really very, very remarkable to have that really macro view. You keep a macro view of the whole K-12 technology vision because you have representation at every step of the way. And I just found that to be really helpful in guiding the process, really, really unique. So I appreciate that. The other thing I'll mention, and you touched on it, and you touched on it as well, was sort of that first page, you know, the wordsmithing. I would encourage, you caught on a couple of the words that were not the highlighted five E's, right? The highlighted five E's in some ways are almost a distraction. The real meat and potatoes of that, literally every single word in that first page touches on an aspect of the 21st century learning experience. Things like authenticating information, things like recovery from failure, you know, it's, we really spent a whole lot of time working through, again, a macro perspective of every aspect, and it even starts off about talking about, you know, early engagement, I forget the exact language of the endeavor. But, you know, it really, I would encourage you, and I'm assuming this will be on the website at some point, I would encourage you to really spend time on that first page because literally every single word has a value in that vision and represents an aspect of that vision that, that in my mind is something that we really did in a unique way. So I, I'm real proud of it, and I think we all should be proud of it. It was, you know, it was really a great experience to be a part of, and I thank you for inviting me to participate, and I'm really, I'm real proud of it. And I even remember that on the quiz.
Any other questions?
I just have.
I just had a quick comment. I wanted to thank you and Bill and for everyone that's been involved with technology, because I have to say, being a parent of an elementary-age student, I cannot believe how much he's learning from the classroom teacher to the art teacher. Mr. Rich has been absolutely fantastic, and between him and even like, if the classroom teacher has an issue, he's always troubleshooting. It's been just a great, great opportunity for our children to learn so much more about technology, and for that, I'll be forever grateful. So thank you.
Any other questions? Well, as a, thank you, and you'll get a full copy of the, of the vision statement either tomorrow or, you know, probably by the end of the week. We wanted you to see it this evening, have you have time to digest it, and we're going to ask probably at the next Board of Education meeting that the board adopt it as the official Eastchester Technology Vision Statement to show a commitment to this work. So that'll be our next step, kind of presenting it to you.
Yeah. Is that something that we would eventually put on our website?
Absolutely. 100%. I think once it's Board of Ed adopted, I would love to highlight it as a, as an accomplishment and then have it, you know, on our, both the curriculum website and the technology website.
Would the board get an opportunity to polish some words? Or is that locked in some... I'm asking for Cheryl.
As the, as we said, there was...
I didn't say smith some words.
There was a lot of wordsmithing that went into it.
I said polish some words.
Of 26th April, so we can, we can talk about that.
We did get this on Friday, by the way. We got it as part of the...
I know, we weren't gonna make the change.
No, obviously, I'm not planning on changing it. I may have my own wordsmithing thing I do, but that's not my role at this point, not a plan on doing.
I don't have any, I mean, now that I know, it was so carefully wordsmithed, it just makes me curious what was some of the intention behind some of the words, because non-traditional, for instance, can be interpreted in different ways. So I might have those kinds of questions, but it's, it's a beautiful document, so I don't need to, I have no desire to edit, just but questions, you know, and thank you for, you know, talking about that. I think the word choice, the history behind word choices and how they're discussed and chosen is really interesting and important.
I actually like the fact that it's very concise, so, you know, three, four slides.
Certainly didn't start out that way.
It did not start that way, I can assure you of that. It was...
I'm sure it did not.
It was probably, it was probably three times as long, but it was, it was a great, it was actually a very rewarding process going through and, you know, deciding what was, what was the most important to us as a committee, that's for sure. So, well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Both of you and the entire committee, and now hearing that it's been brought down, you know, a lot of work went in, not that I didn't think before, but I know how it's hard to move things down and still get them this excellent. That I don't know as well, but I do know how to shorten things. So thank you all for your hard work. It's greatly appreciated, and I think it's great that we'll be adopting it and it will be going on to the website for all to see, so. Next, we're going to move on to item number five, which is a discussion item. This is for the food service. I'm going to turn this over, I'm assuming, to Lisa, but I just want to say that if you're just tuning in for the first time tonight, we started off the new year with a board meeting, we've been discussing this probably, this will probably be our third or fourth month, if not sixth meeting maybe, fifth or sixth meeting discussing this. So if you are new to the meeting, we have been discussing this for quite some time. I just thought that we should go. So, if you're the right person.
I'm going to try to share my screen if that's possible. Can you see? Yep, good. Okay, so we've updated numbers through December, just got them yesterday. So as you can see, the, you know, it's about what we expected it to be. December showed a $20,000 expense, but a $5,000 revenue. So that's just, we continue to just add to our deficit every month with the School Lunch Fund. So at this point, for the year, right now, we're at an $85,000, again, unaudited, estimated, subject to change, at about an $85,000 loss through December 31st. Considering we had $22,000 in our fund balance to begin with, we have a negative fund balance of $62,000. So at this point, I think it's wise for us to make a decision about how we want to go forward with this, keeping in mind that any deficit that is created in the School Lunch Fund may potentially need to be funded from the general fund. Alternatively, like we had discussed, we can, you know, live with this negative fund balance and with the hopes of correcting it in future years, but that could take quite a while for us to get there. So we have options in terms of how we want to cover this deficit, but I think the question today is, you know, what do we want to do with this program? Do we want to just keep absorbing these losses and watching this deficit grow, which will eventually have to be funded from somewhere? Or do we want to consider ending the program for this year and just kind of cut our losses at this point? So I'm open to questions if you want to...
What's, hold on. I hate to put you on the spot, but what's the administration's recommendation? Is that an unfair question?
I don't think it's unfair. I'm your business official. I'm going to tell you from a financial perspective, my recommendation would be to stop the program. I understand it has impacts on children. I understand that, you know, we do have a free and reduced community. We are, you know, we have options to have, to keep serving those students, so I think that's important, but I think at the end of the day, we're losing money because students aren't partaking. So I think that's important, but I think at the end of the day, we're losing money because students aren't partaking of this service, you know. So yes, there are some students who are buying lunch on a daily basis, but the vast majority of our students are not. And, you know, so if you ask me as your business official, that's gonna be my recommendation. I don't know if, you know, Dr. Glass might have a different perspective, and you all might have a different perspective. So it's, you know, I think it's a conversation we have to have. Go ahead.
Another question. At the end of the day, at the end of the week, have we been forced to throw away any food or anything like that? I know we did last March.
Yeah.
Okay, but do we now?
That I don't know. I can find out, but having like sudden closures like we've been having, I can't imagine that we're not having some sort of spoilage, right? And I mean, I think that that's, you know, my recommendation also comes on the, you know, basis that we're gonna continue to have these kind of random closures, you know. We decided on a Monday that we're closed for the rest of the week. I'm sure there's spoilage, you know, that's going in the garbage that we're paying for.
I know, the reason I ask is because, you know, there are people out there that need the food. You know what I'm saying? People right in our community. I mean, we have a food bank in our town, okay? Before we would throw anything away, and I don't know, there's probably rules about this or whatever, but wouldn't it be wise, maybe, we know the kids that get the free lunches, maybe let them take stuff home, you know, before we would throw something away? Or prepare it and have the local food bank come and pick it up on our dock, so they don't have to come into the building? I'm just kind of reaching for straws here because, you know, I hate waste. I mean, you know me a long time, I just don't like waste. And if there are people that we can help, rather than waste and it benefits both of us, I think we should be doing that. The discussion about whether we continue is a separate discussion. But I'm saying like, right now, before it gets shut down, and I don't know who the person to go to with that is. I don't know if it's the cafeteria manager, if it's you, you know, if it's Dr. Glass, I don't know. But I think we should look into something like that so that we're not throwing stuff away. Especially stuff that someone could use, and it would mean a lot to them, you know.
I mean, I could certainly ask the question.
That's my two cents. If we could look into something like that, you know, I'd love to hear back if we made something like that work.
Lisa, can we, what's the prospect of starting this again when we get back to a period of normalcy?
So, you know, that's a conversation I have to have with the food service company. My thinking is that once we close down for this year, we're closed for the year. We do have to go out for a bid regardless because we're in a one-year emergency contract with them. So whether we continue the program or we don't, we have to go out to bid for the fall. So, you know, I'm think, what I'm thinking right now is if we're closed, if we're gonna close it down, we're not gonna, we're not restarting it before the end of the year. Even if we do, it's doubtful, but even if we do come back full-time, May 1st, June 1st, I think at that point, it's just, it's not worth it to kind of try to gear up again. So my thinking right now is that we're done for the year.
What about next September if we...
So next September, it depends on, we're gonna have to bid, so it's gonna have to depend on who wins the bid. If it's the same chart wells, then, I mean, it should be easier for them to start up and get up and running. But we could be in a situation that even if we keep the program going through this year, we may end up with a different vendor next September anyway.
So, just so I ask you, the history that you showed of the $85,000 loss is basically for the first, the first half of the year, correct?
Yeah.
So it's reasonable, reasonable to presume that our max, I don't know, our maximum exposure, our expected exposure if we were to continue is another $85,000 on top of the $60,000 already?
I'm thinking it's probably even more because we have six months to go. Right, because I'm thinking a minimum of $20,000 a month. November was like a $35,000 loss, December was a smaller loss because we only had three weeks. So I'm thinking we're probably in the, you know, we're looking at another $100,000 on top of the $85,000.
I'm just trying to understand the...
The magnitude of it.
Yeah, sure.
So, I understand stopping the bleeding, and I don't necessarily disagree with it at this point. Have we had conversations with the principals of what the impact would be of stopping it? Because at that point, certainly for the high school level, you probably have to let every kid leave the building, and that has an impact. For elementary school and middle school, why are you gonna let kids leave the building and go home for lunch?
Why would you do that? If they want lunch, they bring their own lunch. I brought my lunch for every day of my academic life. What's wrong with bringing lunch?
I, I just don't know that a lot of the kids do that.
Oh, they might have to.
Why not, right?
The argument's gonna be that there is a segment of the population where parents don't have time to prepare their children.
Judith, if you can't teach a kid to make their own lunch...
In third grade?
Yeah. Why not?
So, I mean, if I...
Opening it up to everyone because I don't know that our neighboring schools could handle volume to feed everyone, you know. But I I've gotten word that another school district might possibly be starting to operate a program that we might be able to participate in, so, you know, maybe we get a little from here, a little from there, whatever the case may be, but it's something that I would continue to kind of seek other options for as we go forward.
If this was, if let us just say that at the end of this conversation, we're like, okay, unfortunately, it's come to not providing lunch for the students in person, except for the free students and students that are in need. What would be the next steps? Like, I just don't think tomorrow, I know tomorrow's a remote day, so I just don't think Thursday is the best option for people to know that they're not having lunch because they probably, everyone goes food shopping on Saturday and Sunday in Eastchester, so, you know.
It's gonna be a notice period, Sally.
Even though the store will be empty tomorrow and it'll be easier to get lunch, but I'm just saying, you know, what do you foresee is the timeframe and the?
I'm thinking February 1st.
Okay, so like a notice would go out and it would be February 1st?
I mean, I have those conversations with the food service company, they've gotta do what they gotta do, you know, we've gotta give parents notice, so that's what I'm thinking is February 1st.
So are we at the point now in the situation where before we move to 6.1 on the agenda, you need us to tell you what, or what needs to be done and then you start it?
Yes. Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, if you feel comfortable that you have enough information to make a decision at this point, I think that's what I would like to do, but if you're telling me you wanna see something else, or you wanna give it a few more weeks, I mean, I'm open to that. I, you know, that's up to you.
Here to have a question.
I have one question. We, I think we broached one, in one of the prior conversations on increasing vending support. Have we done anything with that? I mean, especially if it's high school and middle school, I could see vending be a very real support for the small kids that are not.
Um, I, I can, you know, vending, you have to go out to bed for, I mean, if that's something we wanna do, I can put a bed on the street to see if we can get. Hmm?
We have, we have soda machines.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to kind of do a bigger expansion to more, you know, other than just, you know, snacks and sodas, if we wanted to do something different, I would think I would need to, you know, find somebody who could provide that service.
Is that something that we negotiate with the council?
Um, I, I'm not sure. I, I typically, they don't get involved in vending, but I, I could ask the question, but I don't, I don't know that for sure.
I know that personally, I would feel much more comfortable if we had, you know.
Some access.
You know, like the colleges and businesses, they have that same challenge.
Yeah. I, I can check that out.
Actually, I was gonna ask you about the vending machines, because we had talked about that. But also, two things, if, if we decide, whatever, to shut this down for a balance of a year, we are gonna go bid it next year. Regarding the, the amount of money that we're def- in deficit, are we allowed to put in our bid going forward that the new service provider would have to make up that deficit over the next, let's say it's a three-year contract or whatever you do, okay? Uh, and let's say the number is seventy-five thousand dollars, that the new contractor coming in would have to pay us twenty-five thousand dollars a year for each of the next three years for the privilege of being our supplier?
Yes, so you can, you can write the contract with a guaranteed return, and obviously, the bigger the return, the more it's gonna cost you.
I would be talking about on top of the return, because the return is a percentage, isn't it?
No, the return is, the, it's that they're guaranteeing you a profit each year, right? So that's what they're saying. So if I wanted to put, write a contract that said you have to guarantee a twenty-five-thousand-dollar return each year with the thought of, well, it's gonna take me three years to, I mean, I can do that.
But how much do we make now on, on food? Because I know the money that we make, we reinvest back into the program, it's not like we.
No, we had a very small fund balance to begin with, which is why we're kind of in this situation if this, if we had a.
Right, but isn't all of the kitchen equipment, all that stuff normally paid out of the money that's generated from the program?
Yes.
So what I'm trying to ask is, do we, have we made for the last ten years on average ten thousand dollars a year, twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
So it varies. In seventeen eighteen, we made, actually, for the last few years, we've had very small losses before there, before, because we had been reinvesting in some equipment and cafeteria tables and things like that, so, but before that, we would, we would typically, let me see, like in seventeen eighteen, we took in nine-hundred-and-forty-one thousand and we paid the food service vendor eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, so about a sixty-thousand-dollar.
Right, so I, I would, I would think that like going forward, what we would wanna do is not ask them for a twenty-five-thousand-dollar guarantee, but, but maybe a minimum of twenty-five-thousand dollars. You know what I'm saying? And then what we can do as far as that fund balance goes, we can fund that from reserve somehow right now and pay it back to ourselves over the next three years, so that we're not really taking tax money and putting it towards money that we lost in cafeteria.
So that's, you know, I spoke with our auditor about, you know, how would we go about this if we wanted to do this, and she basically said, once the general fund sends the money over, the money can't really come back. So I, I think that's a decision.
Can we keep a negative fund balance?
Hmm?
Can we keep a negative fund balance?
Yeah, so I mean, look, we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a comment either way, that, you know, we had to fund, you know, we had to either fund the cafeteria account or, you know, with the understanding that we may go out three, five years with a negative fund balance in cafeteria and get comments on it, so.
Comments don't bother.
I'm fine with the comments if you're all part of the comments.
It doesn't bother me, as long as we know they're coming.
So I just wanna see if, I think we're just slipping away just a little, it's in our fashion, don't wanna change too much.
Well, no, that's an important thing to know.
I'm not saying it's not.
Before your decision.
Taran, Erin have not spoken yet, do you guys, not to put you under any pressure, because then I have another question.
I have a second question.
Okay, so, okay, Vito, would you like to go before Taran?
No, she can go.
Okay, Taran, thank you. Yeah, don't worry, Vito, I'll let you go.
I might forget, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Looping back to, I'm grateful to hear that the students that are eligible for free lunches will be able to continue receiving free lunches, but being the fact that there's not going to be cafeteria staff here, how will the food be delivered to them?
So as we did in the spring, they would, we would ask them to come to the school to pick up, so, or the children will be in the school on, you know, the days that they're in session, and they could take several days' worth of food with them.
They don't just get the days that they're in school, right? They're eligible for five days a week of food.
They are. Now, some kids just want it the days that they're in school, other kids do pick up for multiple days at a time, so it varies.
So they have that option to get a, to receive five days a week of free lunch?
Yes.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
Erin?
I'm not pressuring you. No, I, the only other thing I was gonna suggest was, I know, like at IHM, they do something like Lunch with Mike, where you have to order a monthly calendar of when, is there any small sort of contract that we could have that just the parents would pay as they went, kind of?
Um, so, as counterintuitive as it is, you know, we don't participate in the food service program, the national food, but the state still oversees it. So the state still requires us to go through them, use their contracts, we're only allowed to enter into very specific types of contracts, so, no. Yeah, I mean, that question, I ask that question of them all the time, and they're like, no, we gotta do it their way.
Steve, and then Vito, I have to go back.
Go ahead.
So I, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we're understanding the numbers correctly. So we, we, the estimate right now is that if we continue the food service program as is, we think we'll end up with a negative, a deficit of somewhere around a hundred-and-eighty thousand, is that approximate?
Yeah, I would say two hundred is probably.
So somewhere, so around two hundred thousand, we believe?
Yep.
And if we end it at the end of January?
Right.
We believe it will be approximately one hundred thousand, is that correct?
Total, perhaps, right.
So, so we're talking about a hundred thousand deficit or two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand dollar deficit, yeah.
Vito?
My final question, I promise. Let's say we make the decision to stop at February 1st. Now, February might not be the best month of this, but would we allow a food truck to come behind the building and kids could go outside and purchase from a food truck?
No.
Why not? It'd be for our convenience. So if we let kids go across the street to a deli, okay? Or would we allow a food truck to park on the public street right next to the school?
A food truck can park on a public street at any time, I can't control that, right?
That's not.
But having a food truck come on campus is no different than having a food service vendor in the building.
My question becomes, if we wanted to create something and just put out the word that we discontinued our food services, and Walter's Hot Dogs wanted to come here?
It's not, it's not, I mean, Eastchester doesn't allow food trucks in, on the street, so the ice cream trucks are considered different than food trucks. Please do not quote me on this ever, but I do know because I tried.
That's for, that's for, to no, to our discussion.
So a private party at your house where you have someone cater, and if they happen to cater in a truck, it's different than Walter's Hot Dogs coming through Eastchester and then people who live in Man- on Manchester, people who live on Fisher, people who live, you know, in Interlake, and people who live in Lake Owlet who walk up or drive up and purchase, that is not permitted.
Well, that's why I asked if we could do it on our property.
So that, that I do know the answer to, I don't know the answer to, to the school.
No, I think that having a food truck on the property is no different than having a food service provider in your cafeteria, it's gotta be bid, it's gotta be.
So if we wrote up a, if we had our food consultant write up a quick spec and just put it out there and say, if you're willing to come one day a week, that you cover all the liabilities and all that stuff, because that's extremely important, okay? But if you could get the liability covered, okay, what's wrong with kid walking out of the store to a food truck between the hours of eleven and twelve-thirty, okay, and then a food truck leaves?
I would just say, I, I just would, I, I can imagine all sorts of complications with lines and timing, I'm thinking of, you know.
Same as the deli.
Well, I'm thinking, just thinking of saying forty-minute lunch, that there are, there are limits to how many students can leave campus and different ways to funnel people through, but food trucks tend to be long lines, and the, and the children, you know, I'm thinking middle school, if it's out there, they're gonna want it.
Sure, same as the deli.
I, I don't think it's, well, I'm just saying, I think that.
It still needs state approval, I don't think, I mean, I can ask the question, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that this is not a contract that I'm gonna sue.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna kind of, I mean, I, again, I get stopping the bleeding, and I'll vote to stop the bleeding tonight, I have no problem with that, I think we need to do it. Having said that, I also think at least at the high school level, if not at the middle school level as well, we need to provide the ability for the kids to go across the street or somewhere else to go get lunch, because not everybody's gonna bring lunch, not everybody's gonna make their lunch despite the best intentions, and we could try to compel it all we want, the reality is that there are gonna be kids that leave their house in the morning that aren't gonna have their lunch, but are yet going to say, why does the junior get to leave campus, and I'm a sophomore and I don't? I just don't think that makes sense, and we're saying you're not gonna have anything in the building for you, then we need to be able to say to them, fine, you forgot your lunch, guess what, you have the right to go across the street.
The kids are pretty intuitive, like, I have a sophomore who's not allowed to go across the street, but she sits with juniors, and should she want, they go across and get food from them.
And that's right, but we just have to provide the option, we have to make, you know, there has to be the flexibility in the system that we're now throwing onto the principals to say, hey, there's no food in the building for you anymore, we need to be flexible.
If you worry about lines at a food truck on your property, the lines at the deli.
I thought it was a great, I think that's a great idea.
The lines at the deli, if you allow sophomores and juniors to cross the street, will be far greater.
It seems that we are, what, what I'm hearing through the food truck, the deli, the vending machine, and the food service, is that we don't wanna completely cut an option for students here to have food in the building. Sometimes people forget, sometimes people's lunches aren't made, sometimes you run out the door, people forget their phones, their sunglasses, a bologna sandwich. So I just think that what's happening here, from what I'm hearing, is that if we take away this service, we'd like to have some sort of service, because in reality, we don't wanna take the service away, but it seems that we understand the situation we're in. So I don't know if, I don't, I have to be honest, I was gonna take like a little straw vote around the room, and I'll start, I don't know if I'm, have all the answers to be able to say yes for today, which then would push the date back a little bit further, which is also not what we wanna be doing. So maybe at this point, maybe I'm speaking on behalf of everyone and I'm not reading the room correctly, but does it seem like we wanna have an, an option B for students who are in the building with no? So why don't we take, I, I guess, maybe I'm not, so if we were to say today, if you were to ra- is this okay to do, like if you were to raise your hand?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, you really can't vote.
Okay, so we're not voting, so.
We're just getting a sense.
So if we had, so, I mean, me personally, I don't feel like, me, I, I do not feel that we have all the answers, we have asked a lot of questions, I think that vending is something to ask, the, the ability for students who are sophomores, freshmen, and even middle school, that would be a liability situation, I'm sure, I don't know the exact rules of students leaving the, the campus and whatnot, you said it was open, but I'm not sure of the exact ruling, and I, I just don't know if I'm, me, I'm ready to make that decision, I, I understand that the decision, the money part of it, but it seems that, you know, we would like, I would like to have some sort of other option, I don't really necessarily think of food trucks the option, but maybe a vending machine, I don't know how that's gonna take, I understand the bid process.
I'll reach out to Chartwell's to the bureau, and I'll see what vending, if they do some sort of vending option, you know, I'll, I'll have that conversation with them. So by the end of this week, I will do a little research, Dr. Glass, can you give you an update in the, you know, in the packet this weekend, you know, if I come across any potential good options that we might be able to.
But coming there, so if vending isn't an option, you still would rather us keep the cafeteria?
No, I, I just feel like at this point, we've all asked a bunch of questions, I mean, I'm one person, there's nine of us, so if everyone else feels a certain way, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it, I, I understand, I think we, as humans, and providing education and a place for children, no matter how old they are, we're providing, you know, lunch is part of coming, is something you do during the day, that's just my thought, I mean, I completely understand if we're all ready to move forward, and I'm the only one who has a question about the vending, and the answer's gonna be no, and we're gonna move forward either way, I'm okay, I, I understand, I completely understand that.
I, I think we understand unfortunately, there'll be some negative impact on, on a few students, we understand the financial costs pretty clearly, and there are options, I, I think we should vote on it now, actually.
Well, I don't think we can vote, but I don't know. I, I just hope.
It was not on the agenda as a voting item, I think you have to have that.
We could, we, we could do a straw poll.
I mean, I did have a straw poll.
I have a previous. We can't take that. That's actually where you're going, now, you know, listen, February 1st was the recommended date, you have a board meeting in two weeks if you want additional information, I recommend if you wanna make a vote, then you should do it next week in two weeks, and give us some time to give you additional information. I don't think this is, it's something you can vote on, it's something you don't have to vote on, it depends on your comfort level, so, you know, it's really your fault, I mean, if you wanna, you know, get a little more information on the vending and that sort of thing, you can actually formally vote on it next week, but next board meeting.
I'm not a commentator, but I believe if someone puts a motion, someone second the motion, even if it's not the consent agenda, we could actually.
I think you, you may, but I think you, because you haven't advertised to the public the fact that, you know, you're gonna be, you haven't noticed that this would be an agenda, upon which you'd be voting, you could, there could be some gray area.
But Dr. Glass, what about the notice to the public about there not being, can you send notice now that this might be an issue as of February 1st? Because then you're just, you're just determining the period of time that the public has to prepare.
Right, we're gonna be after February break.
You know, you're going to be then pushing your decision after mid-January.
But, but then that's costing us.
Correct, that's what I understand that too, like, we're, we're now going to after February break if we go to the next meeting, so.
I would rather do it now.
I don't, I, listen, I don't think you need to vote.
I didn't really think that this was something that needed a vote.
You don't need to vote.
You know, I, I don't think this is a, you're not taking action on anything, I just need direction and how to kind of proceed, you know?
You know, and it's something too, just as a hybrid thought, just not to cut you off, Steve, but I, I think, you know, if you wanted to take a formal vote, we, we kinda knew we were moving in this direction, we could start a notice, as well.
So what I'm gathering, and I know we got into a lot of details with food trucks and vending and whatnot, I think what I'm hearing from my fellow board members is that we wanna stop the bleeding, but that our ask is, when you stop the bleeding, that you search for other ways, whether it's something we pay for or not, or just, you know, allowing those students that for whatever reason forgot their lunch or just don't have food to eat that day, that there's a way for that child to get food. I think that's the general sentiment that I'm taking away from.
Yeah, you said it better than me.
That's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that when you, you know, much like a student who forgets something, when you, you know, a student who, even students who, in my experience, you know, don't have the ability to pay for something, you, you provide them something, right? It might be an emergency lunch, right, but it's got something there for them to eat.
To be a protein bar, a vending machine, we don't want vending machines with break sticks on, I mean, I think that's.
But Lisa, with the vending machine, would you be able to use a lunch bet on it?
I don't want it at all, I don't want something that's nourishing.
Because that's, then you're not, if you don't have money anyways, and you forgot something, it's, it's not gonna be, you're gonna be in the same position.
Even if we get creative and think out of the box, right, like, if we can create an opportunity for, to have volunteer parents, right, if we can't pay for it and it can't be some, or subcontracting, but at each school, a PTA group, or, you know, maybe we know someone who lives on Apple Court and wants to rent, rent a truck four days a week, but, you know, but whatever it's gonna be, right? But in other words, if, if, you know, if, if a parent can come to each grade level or something and just ask the teachers, hey, if you have kids who forgot lunch, let us know, and buy them something and bring it to the school for lunch, you know, just something that gives kids an opportunity to not be without lunch if they happen to forget, or if their parent was not able that day to provide, that's, that's all I think we're looking for. And even if it's outside of the norm.
And, and as far as the town goes, I'm just gonna add that I know my neighborhood association had food trucks once a week.
Right.
They, they may have gotten a permit for it, maybe that's what it, maybe it just.
But they weren't like selling, like, so what?
No, they weren't.
Oh.
You had, it was, you know, we had probably six or seven different ones.
Thank you, Rob, you ruined it, Rob.
And, and they.
I don't know where you live, it's not by, it's not by the car.
But they, I mean, again, I'm assuming they got a permit, I don't really know, but there was like every week, they had a different food truck during the summer, and the neighborhood association organized it, so, and it was great, they did a booming business, the neighborhood loved having it, because it was something different, something they didn't have to cook, so, I mean, maybe the town would work with us if we said, these are the situations, so even if there is a rule against it, I'm not, I'm not saying there is.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, the rule is probably riding up and down the street, and it's supposed to fucking get here, which is more like what happened.
And then I think Cheryl read something too.
What I was gonna say is like, I was gonna say actually what Steve said before, and I think we're kind of all in agreement on that, that stop the bleeding, February 1st is the recommended date, let's start getting notice out to parents that we're go- doing this, the anticipated start date is, if the date is, whatever the date is, February 3rd, whatever the Monday is, that we're looking for alternatives for kids who may forget their lunch and stuff like that, and it could be a combination of different things, and you guys come back to us with that combination, come back with a recommendation, you get somebody to put in milk machines and, and, you know, granola bar machines or whatever, but, you know, personally, I don't wanna see junk food in vending machines, we had that at one time, we got rid of it a long time ago, and it should never come back, but, you know, it's a combination, vending machines, if we could do food trucks on the, on the premises, you know, you get a different one coming every day, and as long as they give you enough insurance and they name us additional insured and you cover that legally, you know, we'd be fine, because there's no compensation involved, you don't need a contract, you know? So that's just my thought, and, but let, let's just cut to the chase, let's get it done, because I think we all agree, we gotta stop the bleeding.
Okay.
So the only other thing I would add is, I agree with the recommended date of February 1st, I would just say, once we put it out there, especially as we get closer, we need to send multiple reminders as we approach February 1st, because I don't wanna be on February 1st, and somebody says, you told us two weeks ago and then you never said a word again. I guarantee there's gonna be parents out there that might read it now, I, you know, I know I get emails now, I couldn't tell you what's going on February 1st.
Cheryl, with your closing?
Oh, no, I'm good, yeah, February 1st, sorry, February 1st is a Monday, I agree with Rob and my other colleagues, Vito and Steve, I mean, I think, stop the bleeding, I, I think that the creative solutions have to come from the administration and the principals and other building officials who know traffic and, and population size and how many students we're talking about, what are good solutions for, you know, no one wants a child to be hungry, to have to, not be able to eat, so what are some creative solutions that we can start troubleshooting now for not, not as a regular offering necessarily, but to fill the gap, I, I think that that makes a lot of sense, thanks.
All right, well, I think that's.
Beat that worse.
That discussion, what?
We beat that worse.
Oh, yeah, we're good at that. So I think that discussion item is finished for now, I'll say that, so thank you, Lisa, for your feedback work, thank you everyone for the discussion, and I think we're ready to move on to agenda items. So if I could have Erin approve item six, seven, and eight?
Be it resolved that the board approves the minutes of the December 8th, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Ed?
Erin, you?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need those technology lessons, Scott. Do I need to read that one again?
Please, I do.
Okay. Seven point one is, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools Board of Education approval of personal agenda as attached. And here we do eight. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the placement as recommended by the Committee on the Street Schools, Special Education, and the Committee on Special Education.
Okay, and Dave, you wanna second?
I second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on six, seven, or eight? All right, all in favor? Anyone have votes? Okay. Cheryl?
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
Would you like to deny?
Yeah, thanks. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the bond refunding as described, is that sufficient? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts, I keep, I'll take it out, the single audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2020, be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following tax sorcery settlements for the 2020, 2021 school year, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves the payment of corresponding tax sorcery judgments from the tax, reserved for tax sorcery funds are available. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the student activity reports for Eastchester High School and Eastchester Middle School from July 2020 through September 2020. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the treasures report for November 2020. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the following warrants as attached, and be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following donation for four document cameras valued at eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents to the Waverly Elementary School from the Waverly Elementary School PTA. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the agreement with Deveraux Advanced Behavioral Health for the 2020, 21 school year. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the following health services contract as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the EHS club charters for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved budget transfers of ten thousand or more for the month of January twenty twenty one? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the following cost per pupil for health services bill to other districts for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year as attached?
All right, thank you, Judah.
My second.
Um, discussion? Steve?
Um, so I noticed that Deveraux contract, we're a little more than halfway through the term. So, uh, my ask would be that we get those as early as possible. Is there a particular reason why that one is retroactive so far back and we didn't have that signed earlier?
That's when we got it from, sent over to us, so.
Oh, as far as the contract, you know, when.
The timeliness.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's effective July of twenty twenty and we're in January of twenty one.
Right. Yeah, they just sent that to us for review. That, we've had a longstanding contract with them for a number of years. So it's, it's really the same contract that we just renewed for the next year. But yeah, I'll make sure they get that sooner.
Judah?
Uh, yeah, I actually just want to mention that on that bond refinancing, if I'm reading this correctly, we are saving approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars a year over the next fourteen years. So the net savings to the district by doing this fin, financing, according to this schedule, is one million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and that's a good thing, right? People should know that, that, you know, that our administration's looking at these kind of things and, uh, doing what they can.
So it was about a million three.
Says net present value, one million, four fifty-three. I'm sorry, no, that's the actual, the net present value is a million, three sixty-four. But the actual savings over the fourteen years is a million, four fifty-three. And the percentage of savings is nineteen, uh, point two, point oh-two percent, according to this schedule. I'm assuming it's correct.
Well, so this, just so, this is a, a, a plan, right? We have to actually go out for bid on it, right? And so this is.
I thought we already had the numbers.
No, so that's, that's how, they have to propose that they believe we can achieve this kind of savings. We have to go out to bid, issue the bonds, all that. Typically, this is very conservative and typically we always do better than this. But, um, just so that you know, these are not the exact final numbers. Um, this is an estimate.
I, I'll give you my Jean-Luc Picard imitation. Make it so.
Yeah, so like I said, typically we do better. And if we don't do as well as we hope we do, then, you know, we may, you know, do it again and try to see if we can get better numbers, but.
You'll come back to us with the, what the actual number is.
Yes, once we get the final numbers, yeah. Okay. Rob, you're here? I'm just, I got excited. Um, well, that kind of answers my question, so thank you. I was wondering why this was going to be published in the Journal of News, but if you're going out to bid, then it has to be published. I was like, so it makes more sense now about it. I was like, wow, they're going to publish this entire thing. So you answered my question that I had written down from prior to here. Um, so thank you. Is there any more discussion before we vote? Okay, go ahead, Vida.
Which one of these are actual actions? Because some of them aren't actions.
Well, the Business Office Recommendation, so. Yeah, that, you have to vote on the charters and, uh.
But we're not voting on the bond thing.
We're voting to vote a bit.
Resolution.
Resolutions to vote a bit.
Oh, we're voting to bid on it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine.
It'll come back. Then we'll have to vote on accepting it, correct? No, this, let me, let me unmute. This is giving the district permission to refinance these things, right? So once the bonds are sold and it's done and the state comptroller signed off on it, the bond, the whole, Sally might remember from the summer, she'll get a package like this, she's got to sign a million times and we're done. This is the resolution that gives the district permission to go through that process. So, all, all in favor? Anyone a vote? All right, uh, Rob, would you like to do ten point one?
Sure, but the unmuted is how it's going to go back to the. Okay, so. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the first reading of the attached policy fifteen ten for the use of school facilities and be it further resolved that the policy will be posted on the district website, Public U A. Policy Committee in collaboration with the administration is pleased to present the first reading of the proposed policy fifteen ten. Policy would create guidelines for use of district facilities. One important benefit of having this policy in place will be the ability to begin using an electronic reservation system for all who seek to use district facilities. Following any discussion at this evening's work session, the administration asks that the board members please continue reviewing the policy and provide any input or directly questions about the policy to the superintendent prior to the January twenty-sixth board meeting if possible. It is anticipated that second reading and possible adoption of policy fifteen ten will take place at the January twenty-sixth Board of Education meeting. And the policy is attached. You want me to read the whole policy?
No.
All right.
Vida, you want a second?
I will second that.
And any discussion on this?
I, I just got, got a question because unfortunately I didn't, unfortunately I didn't get to read this in advance. So my question is, is, might have been covered in here. But does the policy exclude someone using the facilities that's making money?
Yeah.
Does it specifically exclude that? Because I know it says you could charge admission, uh, if it's used for charitable use. But, for example.
Doesn't allow a profit-making endeavor.
I'm sorry?
Does not allow commercial endeavor. I had to look at the language, but.
Yeah, because quite honestly, I wouldn't like to see, uh, people, people use our fields, okay? Personal trainers are using our fields.
Yeah.
Okay? And they get paid hefty amounts of money on an hourly basis.
Right.
And I don't want anyone using our facilities that's charging somewhere.
That's, that is, that is what the policy says.
Okay.
Except, I just got a clarification, except for childcare programs, correct? Those might be, they charge for, you know, thinking of the easy program that was housed in Anne Hutch, right? That, so that this policy explicitly does allow for childcare programs.
Child, school districts are allowed to occupy your child.
Yes.
Permitted uses, geez, this is.
Yes, yes.
Childcare.
And that would be the potentially profit that they would charge.
If there's an access to our admission.
Right, right.
So.
F.
As I recall, it doesn't prohibit for-profit, but it gives the ability to prohibit for-profit.
Yeah, I, I don't see a prohibited uses as F, F for, for certain, for revenue, you know, somebody making money. Uh.
F three, I believe it is. No, I thought F three is.
What, A? So under prohib, am I still meaning it? No, okay. Under prohibited uses, meetings, entertainments and occasions where admission fees are charged that are under the exclusive control law and the proceeds are to be applied for the benefit of a society, association, organization. Um, so I think that one pretty much covers anybody who's, um, you know, charging a fee for anything. It's strictly brought up there.
And F five says for any use by a private for-profit entity that has a direct or indirect effect of promoting the products or services of such entity. So if you are charging for promotion of your own products, you're going to have to prohibit it. Which meant.
I have a.
Well, do you mean like, so like, let's just say we go back and the cheerleading competition comes back. They're raising money for themselves. So like, that's a school. That's right. It's got a school, it's got a nexus of the school.
What is it, the school cheerleading team or is it?
Yes, it's, so like I'm talking about the East Chester cheerleading teams, the three teams or four that are here. They usually have a competition this weekend. And then they use the money to offset the cost of them going to the national championship. So you do have to pay to get in, but that money's used as a fundraiser for a school event, a school team.
All right, I'm, I'm.
Like this weekend nights, the, all that.
As, as long as it's not a private cheerleading club that has a private team that's paying X amount of dollars to be on the team and the coach is making money, that, I would have a problem with that. What I don't like in here is, is in section B of prohibited uses, uh, the exclusion of a fraternal organization. Uh, I know the Lions have pancake dinners that they raise funds with. I would have no problem with, with the Lions or, or any organization like that that raises money for the blind and all sorts of people to use our cafeteria. And, and this excludes them. And I know that they always look, they always struggle for a place, uh, what's a better place than this? And that's, that's like a community service, you know, so I have a problem with that specific language.
Which, which section is that, I'm sorry?
It said prohibited uses be the third line, fourth line down or of a fraternal, secret or exclusive society. Well, I think we could rule out, I'm okay with the secret societies, you know? But a fraternal organization, the Lions, what if the Chamber of Commerce wanted to have a pancake breakfast? Uh, why not?
Well, I feel like there's other.
You know, the community fund, okay, why not? I, I have a problem.
Community fund could, uh, I think under this, but, but it's not a fraternal organization.
They're a.
Isn't, isn't. Well, the Lions are a great example because they are a fraternal organization.
Yeah, but isn't the pancake breakfast technically done by the, you know, the PTA, but it's.
No, Lions do their own. And where they do it is they do it up at the vets on the north end, behind the. Not really, which one up?
Where's Lee Rock Gregory?
They're not.
Yeah, they do it up there. It's tiny and then they, you know.
But if they do it off the campus, it doesn't matter to us anyway. The, the Lions.
Yeah, but this would be a great, maybe they could have more people, they could raise more money, they could do, do good things with it.
I think that things that are specifically prohibited in here are prohibited by law. So I don't know that that's a discretion.
Right.
Um, it's not discretionary. I can go back and check with our attorneys. But this was drafted by GNSBA, um, and so if something in here says prohibited uses, it's in here because it's prohibited by law.
There's a section, yes, I, I remember thi, this section was preface with that.
Yeah, so down at the bottom, education law, section two A, four fourteen. So, I mean, I can, like I said, I can double check with our attorneys, but, you know, if it's prohibited by law, it's prohibited by law.
I'm just trying to think of another organization type that would, you know? Because, you know, the facilities are here for use by the community. And as long as someone's not making money on it and it, and it's a charitable organization, uh, I wouldn't have a problem.
Well, fraternal organization is not a charitable organization.
Uh, sure, yeah.
That's not what a fraternal organization is. They may do charity, they may be nonprofit, but that's not a charitable organization. There's a difference. There's a legal difference. I'm not saying it's a practical difference, but there's a legal difference. That's why a fraternal organization, like you said, the Lions is a fraternal organization. It may be charity, it may even be a five-one-oh-three, but it, it's a fraternal organization and not a charitable organization. There's a difference. In any event, are, are we planning on distributing this besides just doing it generally at these meetings and on the website to, at least to the organizations that currently in the past and normal years have used our facilities? Well, like, is anybody going to go like, is, like, I don't know if Ed has the information anymore, but does somebody have the information to the organizations that we have let use it in the past that have applied permits or we're planning on making them aware of the change?
So the plan is, right, we want to go online with our permitting system, right? We've wanted to do this for a long time. So whoever wants to request a permit for the district is going to have to go through this system. And this policy is going to be front and center on that system. Like, you know, please click that you read the policy, you agree, you know, that kind of thing. So, um, yeah, the goal is to, to make this publicly widely known. Um, you know, we'll, we're going to, you know, adopt a schedule of fees and that kind of thing. I'm going forward so that everybody knows what the rules are and what the fees are.
Was your question, uh, before it's approved, so there are no surprises rather than once it's in practice? Right, my question really was before January twenty-sixth, if we adopt this thing, should we be adopting it? That we at least put it out there so people that have used our facilities in the past can comment? I think the easiest thing to do might be along that line would be to do a quick scan of, of those who've used it and see if there's anybody who doesn't fit into this. Because my sense is that this policy reflects what we've been doing and there shouldn't be any surprises for any groups. There shouldn't, this shouldn't disqualify groups who've historically used our facility. I don't see, I can't think of anything that I would know of. But if we had maybe someone on Ed's team take a look at that and just see or maybe.
I think this is.
Right, that's what I just want to make sure, because if we are, I want to kind of know that. Yeah, yeah.
But a lot of this, just because I feel about a trillion of them, and that's a word I'm choosing to use, because I, the three, um, the carbon copy paper ones, there is, there are a lot of this policy on the back page of it. So like you must apply for the, um, uh, permit within a certain amount of time. You have to follow these rules. So a lot of what's on this policy is already written on the carbon copy papers, except that I'm assuming that now we're putting it here because it's going to go to an electronic. Where, and I mean, what was on the back of that form was never, it was never a board of proof policy. So we're just trying to catch up. Yeah, I think a lot of people who are already using the facilities are probably following these rules anyway. You know, you break the toilet, you pay for it. And that's what happens when you use the facility if it's for whatever it is.
I'd, I'd like to specifically know if the Lions are excluded of this policy, if we could find that out.
I'll find that out.
Okay? Uh, and just for the record, so anybody who might be listening, I am not a Lion, okay? Okay, I have no, you know, vested interest in this thing. But I will ask a second question that I, that I do have a bit of an interest in, is I'm in the Sons of Italy, okay? And we've had lectures in the auditorium that we've used. We don't charge money for them. They're cultural lectures. We've had presentations in the library, okay? Uh, scholarship presentations in the library where we give out money in the li, in the, uh, high school library. Any event that we do there, we typically do in conjunction with the Italian club in the school, okay? So my question is, we're a fraternal organization also. Are we prohibited?
No, you're not charging admission. The thing was that you, are you charging an admission?
Well, what if we did and, and the admission was towards, towards our scholarship program? I'm just, I'm just asking.
We'll find out if that's legally allowable. I just.
You know, because we never have charged admission.
Legally allowable, I have.
But, but you're saying that as long as there's no admission?
That's what the policy says, that you can't, prohibited uses, let me unmute. So Lions Club and the Italian American.
If the Lions Club want to have a pancake dinner.
The one that you're finding objectionable says meetings, entertainments and occasions where admission fees are charged are for the benefit of a fraternal, secret, exclusive society. That's what's prohibited.
Yeah, well, we can keep the secret societies.
I get that, but one is the administration, an admission fee.
But how can you have a pancake breakfast without charging admission? Charged for the breakfast? I don't know. I'm, I'm asking a question here, you know, it's just.
I believe they do it in cooperation with the PTA, it's that the PTA is going to charge.
Well, maybe they could do it in cooperation with the EGO.
But that's the point. So the point is, is that there's, I'm sure there's a solution.
Yeah, I think if you, if you read it.
Before I approve the policy, I'd like to.
I'm sure our responsibility is to find that solution.
I think if you read the whole paragraph, you, I think you'll be a lot more comfortable with it. You know, there are a lot of qualifications in there, um, talking about admission fees, but it also the qualifier that are under the exclusive control of and the proceeds are to be applied for the benefit of, right, the society, the club, whatever. So I think when you, when you read it carefully, I think you'll be more comfortable with it. Um, but the other thing that I noticed, and I didn't notice it when I read it before, but when I was looking for that, that section, I noticed there's an A and a B and then another A and a B, um, at the bottom of page one and the top of page two. So we may just want to.
Different.
Oh, you know what? I didn't realize that. So, yeah, that's a four, okay. That's because the, uh.
Prohibited use and.
Right, and then conditions of use. Can, can we format it so the conditions of use?
Goes on and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they've gone one little bit similar.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we? Do we, at this. Do we, at this point, because we, do we vote? No, because it's the first reading. Okay, so.
Don't vote on anything.
So next, please take a look at this between now and next meeting because it will be something that we are voting on.
No, you have to vote.
It's a resolution.
Okay, so we do have to, but only about it's the first.
Right, we know that this is the first reading.
The first reading, okay. So all, okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, um, sorry, uh, future meeting dates, January 26th, uh, February 9th and February 26th. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yeah, we have some, kind of.
Yeah, we have six.
Three right now. And any comments from the Board of Education? Erin?
Um, I just wanted to thank all the teachers for, um, all that they're doing, the kids coming back to school and the middle school and high school going to remote so quickly. They've all done a great job. Um, and the sports started this week, track started Monday. And, um, Coach Johnson and the athletic director did a great job because, um, the armory shut down after it already started. So they already have, they have some virtual meets lined up, so they weren't reliant upon the armory, which is awesome. And, um, basketball started, which I was shocked. But so, I mean, I'm just thrilled that the kids are active. Modified, modified, track is supposed to be starting next week. Um, it's just giving some of the kids some mobility and things to look forward to, to keep them wanting to come to school, so it's great and I'm excited for that.
I don't know if you saw my, my tweet today, but our, some of our off-season, uh, teams started, uh, doing fitness training down in the, in the weight room again. Uh, so I need to thank all the coaches for doing such a great job with that.
Um, I do have a little something. I wanted to say thank you to, um, the Student Athletic Council. They sent home cards, candy canes, and crossword puzzles and Sudoku books and word searches to the homebound seniors over the, um, holidays. So right before the, um, Christmas and at the end of Hanukkah, each one of our seniors that receives a home-delivered meal, which the number is growing since we haven't been able to have meals in person since last March 12th. So the number of people who are coming into our program are more and more, which means that more and more seniors are homebound. So I, we have received several phone calls of happiness that people were thrilled that they didn't have to watch TV and they had something to do. And also the Anne Hutch, um, Student Council sent homemade cars that were just so heartwarming to the seniors as well. So we were able to send them out on different days. And I know that it was so greatly appreciated. And I know the hard work that was put in by both of these student organizations and their, um, you know, their, their chef, their advisors, oh, what? Their advisors, it, it did not go unnoticed. And I think it was a great, um, multi-generational thing that the town is able to do. So thank you very much and thank you to all the students and the advisors. And I'm sure there were some parent help in those as well. So thank you very much. It was greatly appreciated on behalf of everyone who received them. Thank you. So, does anyone else have anything? Well, I would like to have a motion to adjourn it to exact for a-
Collective bargaining.
A collective bargaining. So, um, Vito?
Owe.
And, and Rob would second it with a little duel from Tara. So thank you guys very much and have a nice evening. Oh, vote, all in favor? Thank you.